Okay, thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley?
Here.
Vice President Headland?
Here.
Trustee Clements?
Here.
Trustee McNally?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Thank you. The first thing I want to say is that our next meeting is Tuesday, January 7th at 7:00 PM, right here in room 211. That'll be our first meeting of the new year. The other thing I want to say is I want to welcome everybody here in the audience. Thank you for coming. We do have printed out agendas over there. If anyone wants to grab one, you can also check out the agenda for the meeting on Board Docs. For those of you who are new to our board meetings, the next things that happen are we'll have some comments for the superintendent, and then we go into a workshop topic, which is a curriculum update. And then after that, we'll allow communication from the public on any topic that you wish. So, just so you know, that's the order of events, the beginning of the meeting events. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. Banante.
Sure. I'll keep my comments brief and I, so we can get to Ms. Barbera's presentation. I understand that we have many community members who may wish to speak tonight, so we'll try to get to that portion of the agenda as soon as possible. There's just one information item I have at this point for the board. As many of our community members may have read, unfortunately, there was an unfortunate situation just recently pertaining to the arrest of a local man and related to alleged acts of enticement of a minor. And I just wanted to make the board aware that our faculty this morning, or our principals met with our faculty this morning to go over some of the details related to that case, to again establish the need to try to maintain a sense of routine for our students, but also to advise our students, or excuse me, our faculty, on the supports that would be in place for students were they to be necessary throughout the day. I am pleased to report that for the most part, today was a regular school day, but it's a situation that we're going to continue to monitor over the coming days and the coming weeks as necessary. So, a notice was sent out to faculty, staff, and parents yesterday evening for me, obviously with the snow day and the weather. Recently, we wanted to make sure that I mention that today for our board, and we'll continue to monitor that situation. I'll have other comments and other points during the agenda this evening. With that, I think we should turn it over to Mrs. Barbera to provide her curriculum update as follow-up to a previous discussion we had with the board. So Judy, I know you'll be referencing this screen, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Banante. Am I live? I am, yes. Okay. So, it's good to see you all again. Thank you for inviting me back. The focus of this evening's report, a little bit of a shift from where we were last time, which was all about New York State Assessment data. So now, we're going to get to the area of curriculum. And so, what I've put together is something rather brief with an opportunity for questions at the end, or during, if that seems appropriate. As a consultant in a district, I always like to make sure that any contribution that I can make is sustainable. So, my focus here in Haldane has been to get to the idea of curriculum support through the regular structures and processes that already exist in the district, and partnering very closely with district staff. So, the way that we envisioned, and I have to say, I think this was a good plan that that would happen, is through the work of the Haldane District Curriculum Council. Okay, so that's kind of the lens that I'm going to use as I share with you what we've accomplished already this year. So, who are members of the Haldane Curriculum Council? Well, there's the list. So you can see that we total 20 at this time, and that all of the people, I don't have names, but I have positions listed there, all have major responsibilities in the area of the instructional program here in Haldane. So it's not a matter of having to find people. It really is defined by roles that they already assume, but these are the folks that are best equipped at this time to really wrap our minds around the curricular program, where it is, and where it might go.
Just, sorry, just a quick question.
Sure, Tom, sure.
In the middle. Would you go back to the seven department chairs? Do those each represent a different subject matter? Or do you have a middle school and how's that work?
So, department chairs here in Haldane are situations that, those are leaders for grades six through 12 in a specific discipline. So there's one for English, one for social studies, a person for math, science, languages other than English. And then we also have an arts person who is more K-12. So their grade levels vary a little bit, but they really are tied to a department or a discipline.
I couldn't get to seven curricular areas in my mind, but you did.
I've got it for you.
Okay.
And also, which are the two district level directors, like who might that be?
Yes, so that would be Tara Rounds and Chris Salam. Right? And so they are both there with us on the council. And that's me on the bottom. Okay. So I always like to go with the approach of, well, why, and then how, and then what? So, the question of why does a district, or why does this district have a district-level curriculum council, is one that I asked the members of the council to answer in our very first meeting. And so we did that through an activity where each member of the council was asked to complete the sentence frame that's on the board there. And they did so individually, and created lots and lots of really good input. That input was then taken by a trio, a small member, a small group from the membership, and synthesized, and came up, those folks came up with a mission statement, which has now been adopted by the curriculum council. And I'll let you read it. So you noticed some key words in that statement. One of them that resonates with me immediately is the idea of alignment, and it's alignment not only of curriculum, the goals of... Okay. Can I move it a little bit? Great, 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 great. But also the instructional practices, the delivery of that curriculum. Okay, so that is now the statement of purpose, or the mission for the council, and we start all of our meetings with that, just as a reminder of why we exist. The second thing we did is we talked a little bit about process. And so, once again, rather than dictate, this was ownership from the group, where they produced responses to these two prompts. One of them is very specifically about the process we will use during our committee meetings, and the second one is really more about the process or our responsibilities outside of our meetings. And I think, again, what's really important about this is especially when you have committees who tend to gather together on some regular basis, there can be a perception that, oh, yeah, that's the group that meets every month, and that's what they do during their meeting time. Where this is really much more about, yes, there are those critical times that we are face-to-face and working together, but it's really about ensuring that the work of the group kind of pervades the professional community here in Haldane. So we talked about during the meetings, as well as outside of the meetings. Again, wonderful input generated by the committee members and synthesized by a smaller group, came up with basically two norms, one that's very specific to the way we will function during our meetings, and another one outside of the meetings. I'll let you read those. Anybody have a question? Okay, so, a little bit more about the how, or the process. As I already kind of intonated, important that this be a very inclusive group, and that we also have a great deal of transparency, because my sense is that they're going to do some really, really critical, important work, but it will be so important for that work to be owned by the broader professional staff. So, we are having monthly meetings. We've had two so far. We have our third one scheduled for tomorrow. Let's hope the weather behaves. And then we have monthly meetings scheduled from now until the end of the school year, until June. But there will be subgroups that will work on tasks in between the meetings. And then we've encouraged as much communication as is reasonable through faculty meetings, grade level, team meetings, department meetings. And I joked with the group last time and said, you know, as I'm here and just kind of out and about campus as that person, nobody's quite sure who she is yet, but she asked some questions, and I said, "I'm going to pose that question. So what do you think about the work of the Haldane Curriculum Council? And if anybody looks at me and goes, 'We don't know what you're talking about,' I'm going to be disappointed." So it's just a matter of making sure, again, that when you have a group of 20, that's great, but there are many other people out there that have ownership of our curriculum. How do we make sure that we continue to engage all, so we can incorporate all those perspectives? The other thing about the process is to be careful that it doesn't become this group that kind of works in isolation of other things happening in the district. And so, so far, every meeting, we've had an update on the strategic coherence planning process, which we're already envisioning is really going to define a lot of the work for the council this year. In addition to all of that face-to-face stuff, of course, we have, we're trying to build a good repository of materials that are germane to the work of this group. So we have a folder on Google Drive. Again, I do a lot of controlling of what's there, but also invite others to add to the documentation that's being created. Okay, so we'll get to the last part, the what. What are we doing? Well, in October, as you can probably already sense, and our meetings are only about an hour, hour and 15 minutes in length. So in the very beginning, we just had to establish, okay, who are we? Why do we exist? How are we going to function? But then, as early as the November meeting, we really started talking about then, so what are the curriculum priorities here in the district currently? And we had folks work with their building-level colleagues to define what they were, and then to share. So the very beginning of an K-12 articulation process. In that meeting in November, we also identified our first initial common area of focus. The team decided that they wanted it to be academic intervention services in the district, and we are dedicating tomorrow and January's meeting to that goal. So again, just to give you a little bit of an idea about it, it's like, well, they already exist. But the question is, are they everything that professional staff thinks they could be? And as we think about any way to enhance them, how can we be sure that we're really shredding through, right? Making sure that there is an alignment? So it's constantly of a grade level being able to stand on the shoulders of the work that's already happened with students in order to really elevate the practice. So that's our very first area of focus. I'm imagining that in second semester, we will be working to address some of the outcomes of the coherence planning process, and we know that these are draft. We had a meeting canceled. We have our next one, though, this month. And it just seems from our last full-day retreat that that alignment and consistency of curriculum development implementation is like, whoa. That's just neon lights all around curriculum council work. So this first part of academic intervention services is as much around that specific topic as it is about just developing a process for working, for articulating K-12. I'm really excited to share with you that at the meeting tomorrow, I've been pretty much feeling like I needed to own the lead on this for a while, but I have my three building principals, we're all partnering tomorrow, to lead the activity that we're hoping is going to be a good step in the direction of vertical articulation. Okay, so, the only other thing that I thought to say about this, here I am with my triangle again. It's a little bit different triangle this time. Because my sense here in Haldane, after now spending, you know, more than just a week or two, is that it is a school district that has such a rich and clearly defined culture. There's lots here that seems to just say, here's who we are, and we're proud. We feel very good about who we are. At the same time, I also hear a lot about the size of the district. And I think the size of the district, it really is, it's one of those places you can just kind of wrap your arms around it. I feel like everybody knows everybody else, and that can be a very, very good thing. At the same time, it brings some challenges. And so when I look at the kind of work that we're talking about here, one of the challenges is really making work more systemic. And people worry about that, because it feels like I'm going to lose some autonomy. But if you don't have systems in a place, then the variability can become a little bit of a problem, and sustainability is always a challenge. If there aren't some good systems in place, sustaining through changes in leadership, or changes over time, can be very challenging. So as you look at this triangle, and we'll be doing this together with the council, it's like the curriculum and the assessment can kind of be the things at the base that have a great deal of consistency and commonality between them. But it's that piece up, that pinnacle at the top of the triangle, the actual instructional practices that teachers make decisions on every day, on how to deliver and evaluate the student learning outcomes, is really something that can remain with plenty of autonomy, which we know only fosters creativity, so we want to be really careful to maintain that. That's all we have to say so far about the curriculum council.
I was going to say, do you imagine this process of the self-defined charge being something year to year, that whoever happens to be on said council would then revisit? Or would you start with this as a draft moving forward? Or is it just an open process?
Great, great question, Sean. I think that the, some of the table setting that we did in the very beginning probably could be sustained over time. I think it's always nice to go back and revisit, but not to spend a lot of time on it. But I can imagine really a good cycle that might get set up for reviewing different components of the curriculum on some cyclical basis. I've seen everything from three-year cycles, tend to be rather aggressive, to seven-year cycles, which kind of feels like it's spread out over time. But I think it's kind of a balance of those two things.
Right. And I would imagine as we sort of incorporate whatever we conclude with the coherence planning process, there might be a, not an overhaul necessarily, but a clear sort of redilination of what that is we're doing.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think it's a very exciting time.
Do you have a question, Tom? I remember from the spring, there were, one of the reasons that we decided to do this is that there were a lot of state changes being mandated for a bunch of different curricular areas. How does that fit in here? Or does it at this point?
It does. It absolutely does.
Okay.
That's part of the defined curriculum. The standards help to define, they are not the curriculum, but they help to define the curriculum. So the cycle that I'm referring to is often something that you put in place so that you're always kind of watching to see what the changes are coming, whether it's state, or federal, or just what we know kids need. I mean, some of those changes are not mandated changes. They're changes that a local district decides on. You know, more STEM education at a certain level, or, you know, something like that. But it is absolutely a major piece of the work. And if it isn't done in some kind of planful, intentional, systemic way, I think we, you know, we tend to kind of like overwork it, actually. Or sometimes it gets ignored.
So I guess, more specifically, are there a number of changes that are coming physically right now?
There are some.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are we having to catch those and implement them K-12 through this process? Because if, a couple slides ago, I think what you outlined was, there's sort of forming, storming, norming, all that good stuff. And then the first thing that the group is taking on, the first thing that the group is taking on is intervention.
That's right.
So for the mandated curricular pieces that we're having to deal with now,
Yeah.
are they, is the group looking at those as well through K through 12, or is that?
So we're staying informed.
Okay.
We're making sure that all the group members have access to changes that are either happening or predicted to happen. But remember that this isn't going to take care of all of the curricular leadership.
Right.
Because you have, you know, such a good structure for teacher leadership around the different curriculum areas, especially at the secondary level, where you have that team of six, 12 chairs. They're still being responsible for the changes that are happening in a specific content area that need to be addressed. Once this council is up and running, then I think that it could really play a larger role in that. So that it's about, this year, coming up, there's going to be a new US history exam. I think I have that one right, right? Global Studies was last year. I think it's US history. I might be off by a year. Who does that impact? Is that only an 11th grade change? No, that's where the assessment is. But basically, that exam is tied to standards that if you then begin to peel back the onion, get impact all the way down to, you know, our lowest grade levels. So it is kind of, you know, you can't have a group that's going to meet once a month for an hour and 15 minutes really take care of all of the curriculum changes that are constantly ongoing. You have, but I think you have plenty of expertise and leadership, not only in your teacher leader structures, but also in your building administrator and district administrator.
Yeah, so Judy, this to clarify, so the, it's not like the standards get changed and they're getting pushed to the side because we're dealing with AIS. It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing process that the teachers and the department chairs and the principals are all constantly working with. So there's no surprises, first of all, when a change happens. And second of all, it doesn't happen immediately. And there's a whole bunch of people, I think, that already have a system in place. I think the idea is that this curriculum council could, when it's fully functioning and the strategic plan is in place, it could be even of more assistance in those standard changes. But we do currently have a process in place to handle them. Is that, am I correct on all that?
You have a process, and you also, you have structure.
Right.
You have structure to handle them. This is, again, kind of like the icing on top. Because you've got really a forum where alignment is the focus. So making sure that even though it's not necessarily a change in standards for my grade level or my discipline, it's a change in standards for students that I'm working with. So I can kind of like figure out, okay, so what is this mean for me? How can I make sure that I'm doing everything that I can to support students in being successful, not just in a particular grade level or a course, but successful in their academic experiences?
I have a comment, not a question. And I said this at, I think, a previous workshop meeting, but I'm going to keep coming back on this, which is, I think it's really important, moving forward, that all of the curricular resources that the district selects are, that at the very least, there's a careful review of what evidence is available for them, you know? So, and I think the What Works Clearinghouse from the US Department of Education is clearly the most comprehensive. And I, there are two reasons why I say that. I mean, I think, you know, I am confident that there are curricular resources that have been selected in the past that don't have that evidence base. And so I just want to make sure that we do that, because it's such a good resource, and it's so, it's the most comprehensive thing that we have. And then also with that, there've been these really interesting articles that have come out in Education Week recently, really speaking to the wealth of shared resources, that teachers are developing like lessons, where teachers are sharing lessons with each other and things like that. And real concern about the quality of those lessons. And so, again, just really, I hope that we come back to that repeatedly. Now, there's actually always good reasons to be made to choose something that may not have an evidence base. Maybe there's not, you know, maybe there's... A number of them. But I do, I do think it's, I do think it's really, I do think it's really important.
Totally agree.
I'm sure you do.
When we think about curriculum, not only do we think about standards, but we think about the resources that we're using to deliver curriculum. And we think about the way that we are crafting or designing our units of study. Like, all of that is just, you know, curriculum is the word. I'd love to just concept map, so what, you know, what are some, all of the things that go into that? And I can tell you, Peggy, that even, I'm thinking tomorrow, I'm headed over to the elementary school to work with Christine and with a staff member who's expressing an interest in kind of like, let's take a look at the research around some of the curriculum resources for elementary math. And the clearinghouse is the first thing. It's like, okay, well, first, let's see what's there, and what other ways would we just make a decision on what it is we're even going to consider? Never mind what we're going to actually adopt. And then when you talk about the unit design, curriculum design, that's, it makes me think right away about my work with Julie and some teachers at the high school, where we have an in-service course going on right now around deeper learning. And what are we working on? We're working on collaborative design of units of study. So, thanks for just articulating how important things like that are. But I see lots of that happening in this lovely district. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay, great. At this time, we move into the communication from the public. We have a statement that we read at every board meeting, so I'll read it now. "The Haldane Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. For those who wish to address the board, please sign in and state your name for the record." The sign-in is right over here by Ms. Famularo, and you'll speak at that microphone. The microphone is there, not so that we can hear you, but so that the recording can record you properly. "Please keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Disparaging remarks and discussion of district personnel are prohibited. Although we do not engage in dialogue, we are listening. Please leave your contact information with our district clerk, Ms. Julia Famularo, for prompt follow-up from the board president or superintendent, if you would like." So if there's anybody who would like to communicate to us from the public?
Julia wants to go off the list.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. Go through the list?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Would anyone else like to sign in at this time?
You can change your mind on that as we go.
To speak. I'm sorry.
For anything, but...
The first name on the list is Lester Brown? Lee Esther, sorry.
What does that say?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm hearing reference to Tyrone Seawright. I understand it's on the agenda to terminate him. I could go into a long thing, but it takes longer than three minutes. But I think your consultant said it better about the community embracing and being together, and knowing what they like and what they want. And as you can see, there are a lot of people here in support of Coach Seawright. I am asking you to please reconsider. His charge has been knocked down to a simple violation from him not paying attention and filling out paperwork wrong. It was a mistake. He's paid his restitution. For you to terminate him for something, he loves this. He came back to this. Even, he did originally have knee troubles. Even when he had the problems, he was there. I understand, Mr. Superintendent, you told someone that called that it was your, you were determined to get rid of him, that that was it, that was your decision. That was via a phone call. She may have related to me wrong. I didn't get a chance to call you. I'm asking the board to reconsider and think of the things that it can do for your community as a whole, including sensitivity. We do know we're in cold spring, and things are looked at differently. And he could bring a lot more than just the coaching, the diversity. I, I'm begging you to reconsider terminating him. Give him a chance. His charge is a violation. Anything that happened in 89, 87, 88 shouldn't be reconsidered or considered at all. Okay? Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to come this cold spring.
Thank you.
Tyrone Seawright?
Good evening, everyone. I think I emailed you on what I...
Just the microphone.
I think I emailed you guys in regards to my whole situation. Like you said, it was a mistake that I felt out. I did everything in my, my power to get this all situated. This has been going on 12 years that I've been up here, coaching girls. I don't just coach basketball. I actually coached the track team I helped out with, coached the football team. I got my own program out here. And like I said, I'm more invested up here in the community with most of these parents and young kids, and the families out here. Like I said, we're here today because, like I said, I feel I'm not going to resign. I want to know why I'm getting terminated. Take the thoughts, think about it. think about it. And we go from there. But like I said, I am here to represent myself and represent this Haldane community. Because I, like I said, this is what I love to do, and coach these girls and be around these kids. And that's all I can say. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I wait to the very end to speak, if that's possible?
I guess so. Tyanna Seawright?
So I am the daughter of this lovely gentleman. As your Haldane community knows, that he is very dedicated. I think more dedicated to your school than he is to his family. I've asked him plenty of times to watch his grandson. And he is at home doing your work and still coaching, not just on the basketball court, but at home. He takes his work home with him. He is constantly communicating with each and every parent here. So I would love for you guys to reconsider resigning him or even asking him to terminate himself.
For those of you who don't know me, my wife and I moved to Cold Spring in 2009 to be near our daughter, son-in-law, and grandchildren. Since then, we've been active participants in life in the village. I myself have been a volunteer coach at Phillips Town Rec and Phillips Town Little League. I'm on the board of Little League now. We both attended countless games featuring our grandchildren. I've considered, continued to do so in the past year. During the last two basketball seasons, I had the pleasure of watching my grandson, Julian Ambrose, participate in the 9D Hoops AAU program. For those two years, he was coached by Coach Seawright. And I'm grateful that the coach permitted family members to observe practices. There and at the many games I attended, I was able to see for myself his style as both a basketball mentor and a caring adult entrusted with educating the young men on his team in more than basketball skills. I believe he's an extraordinary coach and that Phillips Town and Haldane Athletics have been fortunate to have him as girls' basketball coach, as well as in various AAU programs. Now, most volunteers in youth sports are either parents, grandparents, uncles, aunts, sometimes older siblings. Coach Seawright is a professional whose work with our children and grandchildren is mostly of a voluntary nature. Yeah, of course, he's paid. But we all know that most public school athletic programs cannot afford to pay what really good coaches are worth. And I say this as someone who taught economics at the college level for 40 years. I believe that the vast majority of families whose children have had the benefit of being coached by Coach Seawright agree with me when I say he should be reinstated as Varsity Burrows Basketball Coach. His difficulties with his former employer should, in my opinion, have no bearing on his status within the Haldane Athletics Department. I sincerely believe our school district will be making a significant mistake not to reinstate him. His skill, his enthusiasm, his true caring for the kids is something to be cherished and rewarded. We will all be worse off if he's not reinstated. And moving from the forest to one little tree, my younger grandchild, Dylan Ann Ambrose, is an up-and-coming basketball player, currently participating in the sixth-grade CYO basketball program. I and my entire family want to be able to look forward to Coach Seawright coaching her, should she continue to develop her skills sufficiently to make the varsity when she attends the high school. Thanks for listening.
My name's John Bradley. I'm a district parent. I have three kids in the school district. My background is law enforcement. I'm deputy sheriff at the Putnam County Sheriff's Office. With Coach Seawright's situation, I just hope everybody knows intent. To commit a crime, you have to have intent. Just because he was arrested and charged does not mean he committed the actual crime. He could have went to trial. He chose to accept a plea to a lesser charge, which somebody already mentioned is a violation. So he kind of gave away the benefit of going to trial to clear his name completely. I think he did that so he could get back out in the court as soon as possible. As far as his character, there's nobody in this town that bleeds blue. I don't bleed blue. I went to Haldane. I have kids that went to Haldane. This guy, his dedication to the kids is unmatched. He's not just there. I know he coached track and bas-, girls' basketball. He also, I've seen him at the boys' modified baseball games, basketball games, girls' volleyball games. I don't see any other teachers, teachers or administrators or anybody there. This guy's dedication is unmatched. The first woman who spoke today mentioned community. Haldane and Cold Spring are intertwined. A small community. He is part of this community now. And if Haldane gets rid of him, it's going to be a big loss. At the very least, I hope you at least slow down. Don't rush to make this decision. I understand there's basketball games tonight. I think even more people would be here. So I implore you, don't rush to make this decision. Slow down because I'm sure more people want to be heard. And I just, I said, he's, he's a, he's a, I've known him for about five years. He's coached my two boys in the 9D hoops. He's a fantastic coach. He's taught them to be better men, better students, better players. And I completely trust him with my kids. One thing that concerns me, somebody mentioned stuff he might have did many, many years ago. I hope the district or somebody's not trying to dig dirt up from something that happened many years ago for this most recent incident because that's not fair. So just please, you know, slow down and consider what everybody has to say before you make this decision.
Good evening. My name is Lydia Fadul. I'm Emily and Olivia McDermott's mom. Olivia has been a varsity basketball player on Coach Tyrone Seawright's team for the past, I think, five years. And as a parent, as a mother, I would never let my child be around anyone that I didn't think was fit, of high moral character, and someone she could learn from. And she has learned so many things from Coach Seawright that I myself could have never taught her. Never. He has brought humor into practice. He has made her a better player and an all-around better person. I strongly ask you to reconsider. I think we're a small community and we're not a very diverse community. I'll say it. And what Coach Tyrone Seawright brings is much more than just a basketball coach. He's a, a real value to the community, to the kids. You know, he makes everything better on that basketball court. And I would strongly urge you to reconsider. And like the gentleman before me said, take your time. Think about what it is you're doing and what this means for the community as a whole going forward. It's the right thing to do. I strongly feel that. I'm not a person that ever comes to meetings and speaks up because truly, I've never felt the passion that I feel for other issues. But this issue hits home for me. It, it really and truly does. And I would just strongly ask you to reconsider. It's a great loss if Coach Seawright were to be removed. And I hope that you will just simply take some more time and reconsider. Thank you.
Forgive me if I get this wrong. Messina Vigiano? Is that correct?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marissa Vigiano. I have a 10th grader and a 12th grader. I would have been better prepared had I knew I was going to get to speak tonight. I would have wrote a, a page or two or three. I've known Coach for many years. He's coached my son, Robert, football and my daughter, Sophia. My daughter, Sophia, has been playing the game since that little munchkin right there, a little bit older than him. And she loves basketball. Today, she looked at me and said, Mom, I just can't do this anymore. I can't pretend that I'm having fun anymore. He has brought the girls to more sectional wins than any, I mean, if you look downstairs by the cafeteria, there's more gold balls than you've ever seen. It's all thanks to this gentleman here. I'm an end-of-life nurse. I don't, I, I, I can tell you right now that this is a good, this is a good person here. This is a good man. He's done nothing wrong. I beg you to think strongly and reinstate him. We want him back. I want him back. I, I just can't, I just have to say this. I think if this was going on, I feel very strongly that if this was going on in the boys' athletic program, actually, it wouldn't be going on in the boys' athletic program. If there was this, if there was this mess with the coaches and all this BS that went on with him, which, which was reduced to nothing, it wouldn't be happening. There would be such a storm of people coming in here. And because it's a girls' sport, and I believe that Haldane has failed the girls miserably, to get the girls' athletics in whole, as a whole, terribly. I think they're looked on. There's no dinners. There's no celebrations. It's all about the boys in this school. I'm tired of it. I'm really, really tired of it. So now, here I am, a girl. I'm a mother of a daughter. I want her coach back. I want him back. If this was the boys' basketball, this would never be happening. This would never be happening. And, and you guys show, you're discriminative against the girls' sports. Not right. Not right. Done.
Hi. My husband was supposed to come today, but of course, he's late. And I don't have anything written because I was expecting him to come. But we love Coach Seawright and our family. And I've got two children at home that are absolutely distraught and very, very worried about Coach Seawright's future, you know? So he taught 9D hoops. He taught my daughter, Fanola, and she loves Coach Seawright. Oh, my goodness. She just adores Coach Seawright. And we do as well. And he's fantastic. And I want a bit more diversity in Haldane. There are no other African-American coaches or teachers there, are there? I don't know. I don't think so. But, you know, I want diversity. And Coach Seawright is very dedicated to Cold Spring. As I said, somebody said, he spends more time with Haldane students than he does with his own family. And I'm sure that that's right. Because no matter how, what, how late I'm down there watching the kids, Coach Seawright is down there when he could be down with his family, you know? So I'm begging you, please, 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 let Coach Seawright. I wrote to, like, four members of the board. Sent an email. And it's Christmas, and I would like a Christmas miracle. So, anyway, I love Coach Seawright. And my husband and my family do. And he's fantastic. And I would have him come home to my house and babysit my kids. I trust him so much. Okay, thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Sophia Vigiano?
Hello. My name's Sophia. Sorry. I'm also not prepared because I didn't know I was going to get to speak. So this is on the spot. But, but yeah, so Seawright has been my coach literally since as long as I can remember, even before I was actually on varsity. He's always been coaching me, like, for open gyms or just like other basketball programs not related to this school. But like, elementary school, he's always just been coaching me, giving me advice and feedback, basketball-related or not. He's always just been like such a strong mentor and like authority figure in my life, which is why, like, hearing that he's not my coach anymore, especially for my senior year, I was literally heartbroken. I couldn't, like, it just changed my entire outlook on how I viewed basketball. And like my mom said, it's just no longer fun or enjoyable. Like, it's just not the same at all. Because when you take someone so important and has so much value to the team, you're just like taking a huge piece of the, of the basketball program at Haldane. He's, he's just like so involved, like, with the school and the team and the community, which is why, like, if you take, if he's no longer our coach, it's just, nothing will be the same. And it's just not fun anymore for me. Or, and I can see on the team, like, there's no chemistry or, it's just different because that's just, so, he brought so much to Haldane and basketball. Taking him away is, it's just, it does more damage than you think. And I just think that no one really realizes that. So I hope that, like, looking on my perspective can give you better insight on how much he means to us and how much he just, I don't know. Everyone loves him. Like, I can honestly say I love him. He's, I, he's like a parent figure, honestly. Like, I always look up to him for things. And I don't know, like, yeah. That's pretty much it. Sorry.
Hi. My name's Olivia McDermott. I've had the privilege of being coached by Seawright for five years. And I can honestly say that he has made a genuine impact in my life on and off the court. His enthusiasm as a coach and a mentor helped me learn the values of discipline and hard work in my life. I believe that not reinstating Coach Seawright as head varsity coach is a grave mistake and a loss to our community. He brings so much value and important influence to the team that it's just sad to see him not be there for future generations of basketball players. They won't be able to experience what I've had experienced and grow as a player and as a person. So I just strongly urge you to reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Jennifer Gordon here?
It'd be a little hard to follow up Coach Seawright's players. But I also work for the MTA. And I work for Metro North. And many of Tyrone's childhood friends are my coworkers of the last 20 years. And just wanted to say, anywhere I go, Croton, New York, you mentioned Tyrone's name. Everybody, what a guy. What a guy. I was getting my oil changed down in Peekskill. My son had a 9D hoops jersey on. And he said, oh, you're one of Tyrone's players. And we sat with this man for 15 minutes talking about this man right here. And I just, what I've read, this is absolutely so unjust. The MTA has a myriad of rules that span federal, state, and local laws. And they will use it to their advantage in every instance to take advantage of their employees. This man has coached my two children since they were about this tall. And I, like Yvonne said, I would let my kids go anywhere with Tyrone. And if we're trying to teach anything here at Haldane, it's the power of redemption and second chances. If this is a mistake, then God help us all that's going to lose our job. The things that I've done in my life, do I deserve the job that I have, the responsibility I have? I sure hope so. Because I think that's the most important lesson that we're trying to teach our kids here at Haldane. You know? A little bump in the road, and he came back and he was stronger than ever. And I know he'll be a better man for this. So I hope that you seriously consider your decision here tonight. Thank you.
Jackie Perron, would you like to speak?
I think I will.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jackie Perron. I am Jessica Perron's mom. She is the coach of the varsity NJV team at the current time. She is coaching a game right now. So I wanted to come and just kind of feel the pulse of the room and hear what was going on, be her eyes and her ears for her. Over the last six weeks, Jess has stepped up. So you talk about bleeding blue. Jess is bleeding blue. blue. Jess is bleeding blue. She's coaching JV. She's coaching Varsity. She's doing her teaching job. She's an employee of this district. She's putting in 12, 14 hours a day. She is more dedicated than anybody you know to these girls, and to these girls to make sure that their basketball season went off without a hitch. She is exhausted. She is beat up, because when she go...I am so glad that you are at this game tonight, because he's been going to every single game undermining her coaching, showing disrespect to her by being at those games. She is currently the coach, and she should, needs to be left alone to do her job, to step up, to be a good coach to these girls. She wants what's best for these girls. And I find it just so unruly that she has had to put up with phone call and phone...I've been there. Her phone ringing and blowing up with you trying to call her, not to say, "Hey, how's it going? Here, I got the playbook for you," which you never bothered to give to her, to say, "Hey, excuse me, I'm talking..."
Ms., Ms. Peron, just, just keep your comments directed to us.
All right.
Thank you.
So, she's been busting her chops for your daughters.
She's being disparaging. Go buy your, your...
Ms. Brown.
Fine, I will, I will calm down, and I will be quiet.
Yeah, you need to calm down.
Ms. Brown.
You really, that's why you wanted to go last.
No, I wanted to feel the pulse.
Ms. Brown.
I wanted to feel the pulse. My daughter has been coaching these girls, because she loves these girls. She wants what's best for these girls. She wanted these girls to have a basketball season. Pauline does not have basketball, because they can't get a coach to coach. She can have been like, "You know what? I'm not going to coach. I'm going to stay on JV." And they want to be a varsity team, because nobody else wanted to step up and coach.
This meeting is not about her.
I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying that...
It's about Coach Seawright.
Okay, 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 okay. Ms. Peron, if you could just wrap up your comments, and if the audience wouldn't mind just letting Ms. Peron.
I'm entitled to my three minutes. And I wanted to let, to let you know that there is another person in this district that bleeds blue, and it is Jessica. And she's been bleeding blue for six weeks. She has been waiting for a decision to be made. She is not going to the newspapers. She is not trashing anybody. She's trying to do the right thing. By Tyrone... They're calling her. Excuse me, I still have the floor.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I still have the floor.
Ms. Peron, let, let me just interrupt for a moment. Hello?
Listen, let me finish what I'm saying.
No, just, 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 just give me a minute.
Hold on.
Thank you. It is okay, excuse me, it is, it's, these public comments are not directed toward... The, the public comment can be on any topic. If Ms. Peron would like to speak on Jessica's behalf, she is welcome to do so. And I just would ask you to direct your comments to the board, not the, not the public, and to keep them about, positive comments about Jessica. So, if you want to just make a statement to wrap up, that would be great.
My point is that she has been getting calls from newspapers. She is not calling, "Can you make a comment? Can you make..." She does not make any comments to anybody. I just want you to know that she has stepped up. She's putting in 14 hours a day. She's bleeding blue. She loves these girls, and she wants them to have a very good basketball season, and they have been successful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
I have one more name signed on the list. Tyrone Seawright Jr.
That was very uncooperative, but as far as Tyrone not talking to Jess, superintendent and the athletic director told my dad not to talk to Jess, FYI. But I would like you guys to reconsider not terminating my father, only because, one main reason, he, he does put these girls before his family. I was a senior back in 2015. He didn't come to my games. Only when we were at the tournament together, that's when he would come. That's my dad. I want him at my games. Instead, he's here bleeding blue, bleeding blue. He's from Peekskill. He could have took any other job. He's, he's had other job offers, you know? But no, he, he loves these girls so much that he wants to stay here and finish the job. You know, as, as, I don't know who said it, all those gold balls, Tyrone Seawright. And we're, we're not done here. So, I want you to reinstate him, so we can get you a state title. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak that did not sign in, but would, would like to sign in and speak? Thank you for your comments. We're going to go into information reports. So, first we turn it to our student advisor, Andrew Nishamkin.
Hi there. Thank you all for coming. So, the last couple of weeks of high school have been a very good time for Haldane. We have a lot of clubs that are meeting all the time to discuss spring trips and a lot of fundraisers related to winter activities. Currently, a lot of students have been preparing for the concert that's going on right now, and the drama department just wrapped up what we'd like to think is a very successful performance season. And so, yeah, very good time for the high school at Haldane. Thank you.
Ms. Jammin, our elementary school principal.
Good evening. You have my report, but I just wanted to highlight some of the authentic audience opportunities and authentic learning experiences that our students have had over the last month. The high school students have come down to hear reports from our fifth graders on their theories about how the first settlements in the North American continent happened. And high school students also came to hear from our fourth graders about why they felt the Green Corn Festival should be a celebration in New York. So, our third graders had the chance after a robotics unit to go up to Bassar Hospital and interact with one of the surgical robots that one of their parents works with, and got to actually not use the robot during surgery, but manipulate the robot. And two authors have visited our second grade classrooms to talk about the books. John Duval, the author of The Great Spruce, and Raven Howell of Who Wrote So You Want a Puppy, came with a local vet to talk to our second graders. So, our teachers are doing a lot of work to create authentic audiences and to expose our students to real-world opportunities to use their learning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Silke, our middle school principal.
Good evening. As we roll into the holiday season, I'd like to place the spotlight on literacy and thank all of the families, students, and staff that came for our first community read, which was Ghost by Jason Reynolds, and also to encourage everyone to be reading Patina by Jason Reynolds, which is the second book in the track series, which will be our community read on February 13th. Communities that read together, learn together, and grow together. So, thank you. I also want to let you know that a group of ELA teachers from Haldane Middle School went to Carmel to visit the ELA and literacy programs in Carmel, and that at the end of January, Danielle PC will be hosting teachers from Carmel and other districts to our literacy program. So, it's an opportunity for us to learn from our regional partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sniffen, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a question? Oh, no. Ms. Sniffen is at our high school concert right now. I don't know if Dr. Berlante had a couple of comments from her.
I do. Just two quick updates from Mrs. Sniffen, who apologizes for not being able to be in two places at once. The first is, many of our students have received early action decisions. I think Julia had mentioned at last count, approximately 30 of our students have received their decision letters for colleges that, and acceptance for colleges that they applied early action to. At this point, I feel like I have to reference Andrew here, because Andrew, I believe you received an early decision from a particular school. Would you like to speak to that?
Thank you very much. For a long time, I've been wanting to apply to Williams College early decision, and I'm very happy to report that I was accepted last Friday. So, thank you.
I'm very proud of Andrew. I know you've worked very hard, Andrew, and congratulations. Finally, we had some great news last week. Michelle Cordaro, one of our social studies teachers, achieved her National Board certification. The National Board certification is the highest distinction that a teacher can earn in terms of demonstration of their knowledge towards the national set of standards for teaching and learning. I'm not aware if, as to whether or not we have any other teachers who have received their National Board certification. We'll have that information shortly, but it's certainly a great honor for her and also a great honor for our school district. And I would anticipate that at some point we would want to acknowledge Michelle here as a, or the Board of Education, I should say, would want to acknowledge Michelle at a meeting to come in the future. Lastly, the Laramie Project went off earlier this month. It was a fantastic performance. I had the opportunity to see one of the shows with my wife, and I know that there were many other community members there as well. Andrew, I know you were a part of the performance as well as many of your, as many of your classmates, and it was just a great show and a great performance, and I wanted to make sure I acknowledged that. I know Julia did as well. With that, I think we'll turn it over now to Ms. Rounds for the Director of PPS report.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to circle back to, a few weeks ago, our new BCBA, Board Certified Behavior Analyst, started in the district. And I wanted to bring that up because often, a mid-year start in a school district is very challenging. And I just wanted to report back that Ms. Groey has really jumped in and hit the ground running. She's been with us for a few weeks, and she's been very proactive, observing in classrooms, reviewing behavior plans that are in existence, and already brainstorming interventions with administration and staff. She didn't hesitate to get involved right away, and she really shows her, her passion for this work. So, I just wanted to circle back to that. And one other thing, our, some of our staff, often, we do staff development here after school. I just wanted to touch upon one of the recent staff developments that were done by John Bernstein, our special education, one of our special education teachers in the elementary school, and Andrea Saunders, our literacy specialist. John Bernstein had recently gone to a workshop on dyslexia, and Andrea Saunders is Orton-Gillingham certified, so they both came together to turnkey their learning for our staff and offer staff development on dyslexia and teaching phonics. They discussed the neurology of dyslexia and how the brain learns. And teachers were able to walk away with explicit strategies for teaching phonics. They walked away with a cheat sheet as a tool to put to use immediately. So, I just wanted to thank them for that staff development that was very valuable, and our department continues to offer these staff developments for their colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salem?
Good evening. Just two quick highlights. One's on my board report, one's not. The one on my board report is, I'd just like to congratulate Grace Toman. She signed a national letter of intent to play at the University of New Hampshire volleyball at the Division One level. So, congratulations to Grace and her family. And then the second thing, I actually just found out about this year. Our head varsity girls volleyball coach, Kelsey Flaherty, was awarded the Poughkeepsie Journal Coach of the Year Award. So, congratulations to Coach Flaherty and our girls on an amazing season. Thank you and happy holidays.
Mr. Walsh, joining us, our new Director of Facilities, is giving us a brief remarks as he gets his feet wet here.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, my name is Tim Walsh. I'm the new Director of Facilities, having just started on Monday, the 9th. So, a lot of my time here in the beginning, few days, has been spent either on introduction or on inclement weather, which has been terrific. So, a lot of introductions, a lot of building familiarization, infrastructure familiarization, and that will just continue on for the next couple days and weeks as we go forward. Also, I'd like to give special recognition to the members of the maintenance staff who are on the snow team. They did an excellent job over the past two storms, making sure the campus was clean and safe for, for all faculty, staff, and students. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to speaking with everyone in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, going into our consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion, please? These are the minutes from our December 3 meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda, personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Berlante, did you have any comments?
It's highly unusual for a superintendent to provide comment on any personnel matter. It's inadvisable in many ways, but I feel a responsibility to impart tonight. That being said, I'll just qualify this with Tyrone, with, with all due respect to you. The conversations that we've had over the last six weeks or so, on two separate occasions, you know, I feel a responsibility, that's between me and Tyrone. So, I won't provide any comment on anything I've, I've said to Tyrone. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to do so. There were some comments that were made this evening that I do feel compelled to respond to. Ms. Brown, again, with all due respect, I, I know you qualified your remarks with saying you heard, so I'm not attributing this to you, but I can assure you that I was not determined to dismiss Tyrone. I did speak with some community members regarding this, and I've informed them of what the process was and that I've made that recommendation. But certainly, was not determined in any way to do so. I felt that it was the appropriate recommendation to make. Mr. Bradley, who encouraged us to slow down, I appreciate your remarks, Mr. Bradley. I do think this has been slowed down considerably. This was a, an issue that came up in late October, early November. It's mid-December, and I just feel a responsibility to our community to make a recommendation, so we can move forward. And I understand that it's an unpopular one that I've made. I will say that there are many administrators and teachers that do go to our athletic events, and I feel a responsibility to acknowledge that. Whether or not they're seen there is certainly understandable, but they are there. The, and I just disagree with anything regarding that our girls' teams are being treated any differently than our boys' teams would. Our Board of Education is familiar with the standard that I've tried to establish with respect to making staffing decisions. I have a responsibility to be consistent on what that standard is, and I think I have. Whether or not it impacts the boys or the girls, or I have any vested interest in, in one over the other, just, just isn't the case. And I will say, you know, I, I didn't grow up far from here, but if there, if there was one thing Haldane was known for, and I don't mean any disrespect to our boys' programs, it's the strength of our girls' program. So, outside of our community, and I know I just live a little ways away, it's our girls' programs that, that people talk about. So, if something happened in our boys' program, I'd have a responsibility to address it and do so. I spoke with one of our, one of the folks in the audience a day or two ago, and I want to reassure, first of all, everyone here and the members of our community who have written to our board, or who've taken the time to write to me, or who have written to me, that you have, you have been heard. But as I was discussing with someone just a day or two ago, and as they said to me, reasonable people can have differing opinions and/or perspectives and still be reasonable people. And I, I think that's just the case here. I don't think anybody who's spoken this evening is, is being at all unreasonable. I can empathize and appreciate where you're coming from. That being said, it's just something that I see differently. And I hope that over the long term, that this doesn't come as a consequence to my relationship with our community. And as Tyrone has been present at our, our events, I, I would still hope to see Tyrone here. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown, this is not how this works.
Ms. Brown, there's, there's another public comment section that is after our votes that you could speak, you could speak then if you'd like.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. So, with that, just to reiterate, I, I hope that over the long term, this doesn't come as a consequence to my relationship with our community and the individuals who certainly have seen this differently than I have. That concludes my comment.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to say thank you for all of the correspondence. We've received quite a bit of correspondence over the past week and a half, two weeks, and we've received correspondence on, on the spectrum of differing opinions. And we really appreciate hearing from our community, and we really appreciate you guys taking the time to write to us or speak to us. It really is valuable to hear from the community, and it, it speaks volumes about your engagement and investment in this community, and that's what makes us special. So, I thank you. We all thank you for that, reaching out. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New business, going into approval of the CSE/CPSE placement recommendations. New business, going into approval of the CSE, CPSE placement recommendations.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to go into a brief discussion on our Board of Education self-evaluation. After that time, there is another communication from the public time period. So, I asked John to lead up the self-evaluation timeline for us. So, I'll turn it over to John to lead the discussion.
Fantastic. If you remember, one of our two Board of Ed goals, one being policy review, the second one being self-evaluation for the year. So, coming out of the retreat that we did, there was a recommendation in terms of timeline and planning. So, both an informal mid-year evaluation and then a year-end evaluation. So, in terms of timing, my recommendation would be that we kick off the process at the January seventh meeting. Everybody do an informal evaluation using the HEDI assessment tool. I'll resend it out with a link so everybody has it. We'll compile those results, have a conversation at our February seventh meeting, is that right? The first Tuesday meeting in February.
January seventh, yep.
Yep. And then at year-end, we will follow a similar process. We'll along, we can do it after the superintendent. It doesn't need to be contiguous to the superintendent process due to contractual issues. So, we can have a, again, a self-evaluation by each member of the board. We'll compile, we'll have a workshop meeting, retreat in June so we can share among ourselves feedback and then we'll follow up with those pieces in our August retreat so we can build off of that for 2020, 21.
John, just to clarify, the January seventh meeting is when you're going to did you want us to like have things prepared for that meeting? Because I think I suggested that's
I think you thought that was aggressive.
That's a little aggressive with the holidays.
Kick it off then.
So, you're going to give us like homework task, kick it off on the seventh at the meeting and then we'll feed, give it back to you at some date. You'll give a deadline?
For the February meeting.
Oh, just for the February meeting? Okay, great. I think that's more reasonable.
And so, it'll be a mid-year informal and then we'll do a formal at the end of year.
So, either way to June.
Yep.
I think that works. And then we were talking that it might make sense to do a end-of-year formal, you know, with this board, but then to use that information going into the next year with whatever the configuration of the next board is to set goals. Again, you know, so we'll revisit those goals, the evaluation in the summer. Would you mind just putting that in like a a timeline with dates? That would be great. And if we have to add in a retreat date in June at some point, we can figure that out too. Great, thank you. Okay, our final communication from the public period is now. So, if there's anybody who would like to speak, the same rules apply. Please, please, and just, yeah. And just state your name, please, at the microphone.
Maria Coffini. Can you hear me? I have to say I'm very saddened about Mrs. Perone coming and I feel like she feels like it's a competition and it's not a competition between Ms. Perone. And I do appreciate that she steps up. In my jobs, in my lifetime, I've worked fourteen hours, eighty hours a week. It's not a competition and I feel very saddened about the whole situation. I feel sad for the girls. I feel sad for Ms. Dersi Wright and Jess Perone. We're all put in a very tough situation and we have to make the best decisions that we can. My daughter is just starting and enjoyed playing for Coach C. Wright and enjoys playing for Perone. She enjoys playing for Haldane. And I don't think it's a competition about who bleeds blue and who doesn't bleed blue. And I've been in this community for fifty-six years and I chose to raise my family here. And I don't know what happened in Perone, in C. Wright's past. I don't think it should affect us now and I think all of us in this room, in this world, have made mistakes and have moments where we wish we could take back what we did or said. But the incident that I did hear about, I feel he shouldn't be punished for it. And the other thing is I really feel like a decision was made, the first meeting that we had with the superintendent. And I left there thinking we were having a follow-up meeting and the next thing, I got an email that Perone was then the varsity coach. So, I felt like I missed a step and I was confused and I know I reached out to you and then I said I didn't want to talk to you. But it is a very sad time for Haldane and there is no camaraderie between the boys and the girls. And the girls have always been very successful, but the boys have been too. But there is a divide and you never see the boys at the girls' games. You don't even see the varsity girls there when the JV girls are playing. There's no camaraderie at this school. And I've said that since my kids have been here, 2005. And I feel very sad about that sometimes. And I stay for games that I don't even have a kid involved in. And, but I'm sad about the whole situation. It's a sad thing for the community and it's a sad thing this time of the year. And I know that C. Wright tried really hard and I know Ms. Perone tries really hard too and I appreciate both of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say this, in all of my sixty-five years, I'm going to say forty-seven years, I've not witnessed this and when Austin in high school went through this with Tommy Dilworth, who they didn't want. Now, Mr. Benati, you've been smirking and looking and all of that, all kinds of the way. Ms. Perone, I'm sorry for you. Your daughter's a good coach, by the way. It's just that she, he's not my son. He's nothing to me. I'm a community activist from the City of Peace, Kelly. He's nothing to me. But, but I'm going to say what you've done is you came up and you're quoting, calling newspapers and she's not talking to the newspapers. It's a simple violation, people. It's a violation. It's been pleaded down. If you got a parking ticket or a speeding ticket or anything like that, it's been pleaded down. For God's sakes, he's not the guy that was running around here meeting sixteen-year-old girls. That's not being talked about too much, but you know, you're just rubbing that over. Did you overlook his past? Did you look into his past to see what he was when he was up here substituting? I think not. You from Arlington, right, Benati? I know you too, okay? You just don't remember me. All right? I think, I think it is, well, you know what? He let the gate open when he let you get up here.
You know what, Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown, if you just want to, if you just want to wrap up your comments.
If, if, I would ask, I would like to poll the board.
That's not how this works. This is for you to give comments and we're here to listen.
So, the decision, but he all but said he's made his decision. Is that it?
The board has made a decision. We voted. And ma'am, if you wouldn't mind, just, you can, you're welcome to come to the microphone and make any comment that you would like. So, Ms. Brown, if you wanted to wrap up your comments.
Well, can't nobody call a newspaper any better than I can and I shall be. We'll see how it goes. I'll have every last one of them up here to talk to you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. If you could just state your name, please.
My name is Mrs. Beach.
Mrs. Beach, thank you.
That this was put on a consent agenda. This should have been separate and apart from the consent agenda. So, I'm asking that you bring it back so that we see a vote by everybody rather than a consent agenda so that everybody votes. You're voting on a retirement, you're voting on appointments and then a termination, all in the same time? That's not appropriate.
Absolutely not.
So, I'm asking that you bring it back. I'm very upset behind this decision.
Just procedurally, I, if I may.
It should not be on a consent agenda.
If I may clarify that the board has the ability to request that the agenda be modified if they want to pull it off and have it acted upon as a separate item.
Well, as someone speaking, I'm asking, can that be revisited?
They chose not to.
So, that was, that was, that question was posed?
Any board member can make a motion to adopt the agenda. No, it wasn't posed, but our board members have had meetings for quite some time and they understand that they can make a motion to pull an agenda item out separately as per Robert's Rules of Order. They chose not to.
Yeah, it should not be on the consent agenda. It should not, it should not be on the consent agenda.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Jennifer Gordon here. Sorry for getting so emotional before. I always get emotional for people that I love. You know I love you, Tyrone. One of the most frustrating experiences with this Haldane School District in the last nine years with our children here is the random nature. The discipline is dulled out for our students. We know of incidents where teachers have been in a lot more trouble than this. And if I was to advise Tyrone, I would advise Tyrone to find out those situations and seek legal counsel if his heart chooses to follow that path. But I'm a big believer in not chasing people who don't want you in their life. And if this goes down this way, this was an old-fashioned lynching right here. This was predetermined. And if this is the way it's going to be, I know that Tyrone is going to find a bright future because any school district in the Hudson Valley would be lucky to have him. Thank you.
Has there been a decision made yet about Coach C. Wright? And why, why was there a decision made before everybody else spoke?
It's on the agenda.
Well, that's a lot of crap. And I know here, because I've been here eleven years, there was teachers, a couple of teachers here and I love the teachers, but they're arrested for different crimes and I don't know what happened, but they're teaching now. And I don't know why Coach C. Wright is picked on. You know what I mean? So, that's ridiculous. Why is Coach C. Wright singled out? You know, there's about four people on the staff in Haldane that have been arrested. You know what I mean? So, and he's been singled out, you know what I mean? And they already have their jobs, which I'm glad they have their jobs. They're nice people, you know? So, I know most of the people want Coach C. Wright and it's nothing about Ms. Perone. I'm sure she's fantastic, you know what I mean? But we're here to speak about for Coach C. Wright, you know? And it's not fair, it's really not fair if you've already made up your minds, you know? I think it's racist.
Whatever you voted on, I want C. or I want, I want, I want the recommendation what you're firing me on. Let's clear up the matter with Mrs. Perone.
No, 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 Mr. C., if you could just address the board.
I was told, I was told by the super and athletic director to not talk to Jess, to not talk to her, to comment to your daughter. I reached out to her. I don't have a playbook. My ability is just in my head. I know, I know the game that well. I've been brought up that way. So, for her to be saying that, but my biggest thing right now, if you already voted, I want, I want you to present it to me and tell me what you're firing me on. I want to hear that, what everybody hear.
Okay.
That's all.
No, so just excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Is there anybody else who would like to make any comments at the microphone? So, thank you for the additional comments. We move into board reflections now and at this time, I would like to let everybody understand how consent agenda works. So, you'll notice that we have a consent agenda minutes, a consent agenda financial and a consent agenda personnel. That is so that we don't have to go through every single item with a motion and a second and a discussion and a vote and a second and a motion. Excuse me, I'm speaking now, actually. Ma'am, ma'am, I'm. Okay, so the way a consent agenda works. So, we put these items on a consent agenda so that we can collectively vote on things that we have an intention to vote affirmatively on. It is our intention, it was our intention to vote affirmatively on the consent agenda personnel, which included Mr. Tyrone's, C. Wright's termination. That does not mean it is predetermined. At any time, a board member can request, make a motion to have an item pulled off the consent agenda. That has happened in the past at our board meetings. We have done that when a board member felt like, you know what? I didn't get a chance to read that item. Can we pull that off and wait? And we've said, yeah, absolutely. We make the motion, we do the vote, we get it off. It is common knowledge amongst the board members that that is something that can happen. So, just because an item is on consent agenda does not mean it has to be voted on. It can be pulled off if a board member makes a motion to do so. No board members made a motion to do so. If an item was pulled off and was just separate, as we're going to do just this termination separate, which is not how we ever do terminations, right? We put terminations, retirements, hirings, all in consent agenda. But if we had made the decision to do that, it wouldn't be a roll-call vote. It is a vote that the board makes as a group. Okay? So, that's, that's how our procedures work. Is there any other board reflections? Did I say enough? So, it is now, the superintendent has an opportunity to make any final thoughts.
Just Tyrone, following tonight's meeting, I've heard your request, you'll receive something from me in writing. Following tonight's meeting, you will receive something from me in writing. Usually within a week. But the action, the action's been taken tonight. The action was taken tonight, Tyrone. That's what happened. His position was, termination was acted upon, yes. I don't have any further comments.
Okay, great. So, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic.